Would you call the row, please?
President.
Here.
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 David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Proclamation of National Police Week by the City of Moore to recognize National Police Week 2014 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Moore Police Department, and whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded deaths in 1791, over 19,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Moore Police Department. Whereas the 20,267 names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, whereas 286 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this year, including 100 officers killed in 2013. Whereas the service and the sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 26th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2014, and whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families in that to further remember their contributions. I direct all city flags to be flown at half-staff for the day. Now therefore be it resolved that Igleen Lewis, Mayor, formally designate May the 11th through the 17th, 2014, as Police Week in Moore, Oklahoma, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. Thank you. I also like. And if I could, Councilman O'Neal.
Sure. It's gonna be a busy week for us, and I left you some literature up there, you can browse at your own convenience, but one of the highlights is gonna be our care registration program on the 11th. We're gonna do our normal memorial service on 15th, and then we'll be part of the big safety or health day on the 18th, or 17th, there we go, on Saturday. So I encourage you to come out and please write the word, it's all about helping the community and remembering our lost brothers and sisters.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to say thanks to two of our members here on the council that also serve as police officers and law enforcement officers. I appreciate the job you do. I know you have a new job now, but I still consider your law enforcement. District Attorney's Office is a good job. Thanks.
You also might come up, Mayor, that we have, I think, three or four officers that are out in Arkansas right now helping the communities out of tornadoes.
Yes.
Three members, yes.
Three members, and we do appreciate the work that they're doing. Okay. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 21, 2014. Item B is receive the minutes of the planning commission meeting held February 11, 2014. Item C is approve a field lease agreement with the Moore Girls Softballs Association, MGSa, for one year. Item D is approve and ratify claims expenditures for FY 2013-2014 in the amount of $1,370,216.33.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Everybody get your questions asked on the claims? Any other notes to the minutes? If not, would you call for the vote?
We have some people.
Oh.
On 2B.
On what?
2B.
2B. Receive the minutes of the plan? Did I miss that? Okay. Item B is receive the minutes of the planning commission meeting on February 11, 2014.
I think there was somebody signed up to speak on this?
On the consent docket?
Well, I understood.
It's on item three. Come here. We don't normally have people speak on a consent docket. We'll have to pull the item.
Would somebody sign it?
Yes. Item 2B, you may want to make a motion to pull item 2B?
I'd make a motion to pull item 2B.
Okay, do we have a second?
Certainly.
All right. We pull, would you call for that vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item is pulled. Item 2B is receive the minutes of the planning commission meeting held February 11, 2014. Steve Hardeman is signed up to speak on this issue?
The, uh, the minutes for the planning commission last week, she told us it was A1, Elizabeth, I believe, she told us it was A1 for the dog kennel. Well, A1, it was magically appeared that it was A2 after the, after the fact. And then she told us the dog kennel could not be used, the dogs could not be outside whatsoever, and then magically that got changed too. So why is the minute, why is, we couldn't get the minutes for, I thought we were supposed to get them within five days, we just barely got them Friday.
The minutes that the planning, or I'm sorry, the city council are from February 11, and the meeting for the minutes that you're referring to was in March. So they have not, they're not considering the March minutes on this item.
Okay, so I don't need to talk about the dog kennel right now?
Uh, no.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion to put item 2B back into the consent docket?
Certainly.
Do you have a second?
Certainly.
Thank you, thank you. Would you call for the vote on that, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries, okay. Item A, B, and C, and D are still in the consent docket. We have a motion, do we have a second? Scott, didn't you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a second.
Jason.
Okay. Would you call for the vote on the consent docket, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is Consider Appeal to Condemnation Order for 904 Zap Power. This is from Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got some pictures that I can put up for you as we discuss this item. In case you haven't been up to look at the, the property. This property was damaged in the May tornado last year. It was a, is a rental home. The owner does not have insurance for the property. We have met with the owner several times in, at City Hall, and they have had several problems with the property getting materials ordered and delivered correctly. We did mail the notice for condemnation on March 20th. The administrative hearing was held on April 2nd, and at that time we determined that because there was no concrete deadlines or ideas of when this project could be accomplished, we would move forward with the condemnation. Since we did notify them that this item has been included on council docket, the owner has been working with Servmore. Servmore has agreed to supply volunteers to help with the repair of the home. They think that once the school is out for summer session, that they'll have a lot of volunteers that they can assign to this project. Staff recommends extending the compliance time for this property for an additional 45 days. That would give them until the end of June to begin repairs and make some, some progress. We do have representative for the homeowner here, and we also have a representative from Servmore, if you have any questions.
Elizabeth, I may have a chance to read all this, my qualities, but what was the delay in getting the property taken care of?
They were without insurance on May 20th.
Okay, so it's insurance, okay.
We have Eva King signed up to speak, would you like to speak?
We're just wanting to make sure that we're able to help us and do that consideration.
Okay. What, what is Servmore gonna be able to do? If you could just kinda tell us what you guys are gonna do, maybe how long you think it might take?
Yep. All right. The first, Mayor and Council, first we count our business for the King family is, we've got windows ordered for him, the windows have actually been delivered at this point. We're just, we've got some skilled labors that have volunteered to come in, they're gonna be in the first week of June. So, and then from there, there's some interior things that we're gonna be doing, we're pretty, pretty well committed to helping them throughout the project, but right now we're just waiting on skilled labors to come in and volunteer. We've got a lot of unskilled folks, but you know, this is a, a project that we need some skilled labors for, so we've got thousands of them coming, or at least thousands of volunteers, and several of them will be skilled, so we just, if we could have a little bit more time to get to this, we're, we'd prefer to, to do it on a volunteer basis if we could.
But it's all, it's all stuff that you think you guys, you guys can handle, though?
Yeah, we can.
Would 60 days make it easier? I mean, 45 is pretty quick.
We'll certainly start with 45. I mean, June 9th is the day that we have a team scheduled to work on the property.
Okay, well if you need longer, let us know.
Okay.
We're not here to, you know, tear down anybody's house by any means if we need to help, you know, there are probably some of those that might even volunteer to help.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is Consider the Final Plaid of Siena Ridge, Section 2, located in the northeast quarter of Section 12, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Northeast 27th and west of Bryant Avenue. Application by Affinity Development LLC, Brandon Waller, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7-0. This is in work 2.
Mayor and Council, this property is located south of Northeast 27th Street and west of South Bryant Avenue, sorry, that's North Bryant Avenue, is currently zoned R1 for a single-family residential community. Now, the final plat consists of 44 lots on approximately 12 acres, that's a density of four units per acre. Access is provided from North Bryant Avenue with one curb cut proposed. Additional access is provided through existing streets installed with the Siena Ridge Edition Section 1. There is no flood plain located on this property. Water and sewer will be extended to serve the site. Staff recommends approval of this item. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Just, Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is Consider the Final Plaid of 35 West at Royal Rock, located in the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 19th Street and west of Telephone Road. Application by Rural Park Business Development LLC, Pat Rodfoot, Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7-0. This is in work 3.
Mayor and Council, this property contains 17 acres. It is located north of Southwest 19th Street and west of Yule Drive. The property is currently vacant. The final plat contains one lot for the approved 35 West apartments with 314 multifamily units. Public water and sewer will be extended to serve the site. There is no FEMA flood plain located on the property. Detention is required and will be located in the southern portion of the tract. Access is provided by Southwest 19th Street through a private drive. The secondary, required secondary access is provided by Southwest 17th Street and Yule Southwest 17th Street being a collector road that has access to Max Morgan Boulevard and Telephone Road. This community will be gated and must comply with the gated community's ordinance. Staff recommends approval of this item.
Is the, are we gonna improve that intersection there south of 17th and Telephone Road, is it too close in proximity to?
Traffic signals?
Yeah.
It's, it's in the planning stages in terms of overall development, the redevelopment that's gonna happen up there, the possible relocation of 17th that we've talked about a little bit, and when that's all done, where there's more traffic gonna be coming from this area and from that area up to 17th, we think that a traffic signal is gonna be necessary, so.
That was, that was my question I was gonna have, since we're redoing 17th, do we need to do that before they start?
No, with this development and with the other commercial development that's gonna be happening over there, that's, they're gonna be redoing their zoning, we're gonna be working with them in terms of the developers, Rodfoot, Pat, and, and all of them in terms of the timing of all of this to make sure that what we've committed to will work with the timing of, of these apartments, of the future commercial development that's happening over there now. So it's kind of like a puzzle fitting it all together, but we're, we're working with them and they're working with us closely to make sure that when these apartments open, that there will be another way in and out of it rather than only to 19th Street.
That's good. Anybody else?
It must approve.
All right, thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? See anybody signed up on it? Anybody wanna speak on this item? No, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is Consider Rezoning Application Number RZ-911, located at the southeast corner, excuse me, southeast corner of Fourth, excuse me, I messed that up, southeast quarter of Section 12, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Northeast 27th and west of Bryant Avenue, from A1 Rural Agricultural District to A2 PU Suburban Agricultural District with a Permissive Use and Approve Ordinance Number 76914. Application by Judith Trussell, Planning Commission recommended approval of this 5-2. This is in work 2.
Mayor and Council, this is the item, it generated a lot of discussion at Planning Commission last, last month. We do have an official protest filed with this application, they have 71% of the eligible properties, and I have emailed that protest map to you. The applicant did arrange, excuse me, the applicant arranged for a neighborhood meeting last Thursday. The applicant's very concerned to work some, out some of the neighbors' concerns through, through that meeting, and that it was unfortunately not successful, but now the applicant has requested a continuance of this item to May 19th. This is in order to try to continue her work with the neighbors to try to find some common ground, and staff recommends approving granting the two-week continuance request.
How are they gonna try and work with the neighbors? Are they gonna have a, kind of a town meeting, or?
Well, I believe that the applicants are looking into hiring some outside counsel to guide them through this process, and maybe with that, they can give her some advice on how to.
And move it somewhere else? Is that one of the things you're considering, is moving it?
Um, well, no, I don't believe so. The applicant is here if you'd like to speak with her.
I just wonder, did you say there was a protest of 70 what percent?
71% of the total land area, and that's the land area within a 300-foot radius.
So Randy, what's the number that we have to have before we have to have a majority vote?
Five.
Okay, but what's the protest number? Is it 50% or 51?
51%.
51, so we'd have to have a 5, 5-2 vote at least to pass that. But they want it tabled?
Yes, they would like to table it, as I said, they're, they're working with outside counsel to come and help them reach an agreement.
In the past, we've let the people kinda speak on this since they're already here, 'cause I, I hate that we table things and make people come back, but should we, you wanna hear from the citizens since they're already here?
No, I don't think it's fair to the applicant if you do that, but I mean, it's not fair to the citizens if you don't, so it's kinda 50-50.
I'd like to hear from us since they're already here. I hate to ask people to come back. Do you guys have any thoughts? Terri, you're, you're scratching your forehead.
Yeah. Okay, we'll just start them off. Tammy Evans?
Hello, good evening, thank you, City Mayor and Council, for going ahead and letting us speak. We do all have busy lives. I'm Tammy Evans, I live at 2100 Northeast 18th Street in Moore, right across from the applicants. I was born and raised the City of Moore resident, graduated from Moore High School. Me and my husband have invested a lot of time and money into our property that we custom-built ourselves. We live right across from the zoning applicant where the palm trees are off of Bryant in Lost Creek Edition. I have been diagnosed with a rare eye disease that is robbing me of my vision. I go every 30 days to a retina specialist and get injections in both eyes. This will not cure my problem and eventually will leave me blind, so me losing one of my main senses for my quality of life is going to leave me with my hearing, and the last thing I want is to hear barking dogs all throughout the day and throughout the evening as I am sitting out on our patio or swimming in our pool, or entertaining friends and family. So here are my issues. I feel there is a hidden agenda that the city is not being upfront with us about this property and the new parks plan. The Planning Commission Board, well, two members argued with us, with the opposing legal petitioners at the meeting. Your minutes are incorrect, I saw the rough draft, and I personally recorded it on my phone. I know for a fact the Musgrove said they haven't been able to use the current kennel located at 1701 North Bryant due to the condition it was in. The city staff is authorizing a grandfather clause for the old kennel saying that they have been in continuous use of it. Well, their business wasn't registered with the Secretary of State until July of 2013, with an address being 1705 North Bryant. They didn't buy the property until August 9th of 2013 per Cleveland County Assessor's office. The old kennel was purchased on September 22nd of 2010 with the personal residence sitting behind the kennel. I obtained a letter from the Deputy County Assessor, from David Tinsley's office, stating no personal business tax has been filed with the commercial piece of property since 2001, so the previous owners along with the new owners aren't even filing proper tax required to run a business. If so, did the city staff inspect invoice dues and current taxes such as the Oklahoma Tax Commission Sales Tax Report, a Form 901, a Form 501, to prove a real business has been running out of that facility? And has anyone from the planning department even gone out to the property and looked at the current condition of all three parcels of the land they own? The proposed new location sits too close to Bryant, and traffic will be an issue along with noise, which will be a nuisance to our neighborhood. Smell is one of my concerns. My property value will be affected by their operation and a big negative impact as far as depreciation. Our city ordinances are very outdated, and we have no kennel laws, no rules and regulations nor licenses or permits required for this type of business. A dog could escape from their property and attack a child at the park, daycare, or at the elementary school that's not even probably 2,300 feet from that property. They don't ever shut their gate, and I don't believe anything they say after being lied to at the unofficial last Thursday meeting that I walked out of after Mrs. Musgrove said she didn't care what we, the neighbors, thought. I wasn't wasting my time trying to come to concessions with them. I don't want a full-blown commercial enterprise going in my backyard of any type. I don't care what they do, nothing will change my mind. The previous owners only used it for show dogs, and they were out of town more than they were in town. They don't own a full five acres, and our city staff has catered to this property unknowingly to me as to why, instead of listening and hearing to the majority, which is 100% of all adjacent landowners beside the applicants. Why is the City of Moore Animal Shelter where it is, outside of city limits, and it only holds 30 dogs? Well, I would like to know, if this is, if this were happening to you, what would you do? Would you want a kennel in your own backyard? Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Hardeman?
This is here in Section 12, 223, the area and height regulations. All lots improvements on the A2 Suburban Agricultural District should meet the following requirements. All buildings set back to the street right-of-way lines comply to the following front yard requirements. A minimum depth should be 50 feet with a minimum of 75 feet from the section line road, which Bryant is a section line road. Their house is 67 feet from the easement. 25 feet from the, the center of the road is the easement. Their house is 67 feet from the, from the center of the road. So the house is 42 feet from the easement, so it is 33 feet too close to the road. And then they're wanting to add this onto the front. And then they're wanting to add this onto the front of the house. And I guess you can drive through that. So that would make it even closer to the road. So if there's no requirements, I mean, if that, that, if that's approved, then anything should be approved as far as where you can put the building. And also in, on the state, Oklahoma state requirements, you can only be twenty-five-hundred feet from a school or a daycare. It's eight hundred thirty-five feet to daycare and it's twenty-two-hundred feet to a school, approximately, not exact. So that's within the twenty-five, Oklahoma state is five hundred feet from that house, I'm guessing? So that's all that.
Thank you. Janice Turner?
Good evening. The pictures that I provided is the view off my back porch. So we are the, we are the closest to the applicants. We are approximately a hundred and, I think, four feet, a hundred and six feet from their, their property. My name is Janice Turner and my husband, Don, and I live at the property that runs the entire length of the applicant's property. I moved to Moore in nineteen eighty after a friend of my mom's from our church, Tom Strewhall, suggested it was the perfect place to raise a family. Tom built my first home in J.B. Estates on Cottonwood Drive. Well, Tom was right. So ten years and three kids later, we built another home just blocks away on Southeast Fifteenth. In nineteen ninety-eight, we moved to Germany. We returned to Moore four years later. In two thousand and three, Don's return from a long deployment to Iraq led us to reevaluate important life decisions, one of which, one of which became Don's retiring from the Air Force after nearly twenty-five years. But our most important decision was where do we want to spend the rest of our lives? It really was an easy choice for us. It was Moore. We wanted a house we could build a shop on, a cul-de-sac. We wanted neighbors but not so close you could hear them coming and going. We wanted to be able to enjoy our backyard and to continue to entertain our many family and friends. Lost Creek was the answer. In two thousand and three, our new neighbors, Robbie, Kevin, Don, and Rita welcomed us and we felt blessed. When we first saw the sign for the application for the rezoning of the house of seventeen oh five North Bryant and then found out it was for another doggy boarding daycare, we were not happy. This house is approximately a hundred feet from our backyard. At the Planning Commission meeting, Elizabeth stated that permissive uses by definition are uses that may not be appropriate in all areas with the underlying zoning due to potentially undesirable characteristics. The council must determine if a hundred-foot setback from single-family homes is adequate. One hundred percent of the property owners surrounding the applicant's property are in agreement. We don't want it and we have signed a petition stating the fact. It's hard for us to understand the seventy-one percent of the circumference. I guess it's just a percentage of the surrounding land, but we do have a hundred percent of the land that touches that that have signed this petition. We know there is a kennel currently located at the seventeen, we knew there was a kennel located at the seventeen one oh property when we bought our house. We were told by our realtor that it was for show dogs only and boarding would be sporadic and it really was. We believed him. The gray building was not visible in its entirety because of the large berm of trees that were planted behind our house at the time of the purchase. In the last few years, the city had to cut down the trees to remove the berm for better drainage. We have since replanted seven trees closer to our fans to act as a sight barrier and add aesthetics. We have also planted twelve trees for our own backyard for the same reason. Officially, we all have the right to the quiet enjoyment of our property. That means your home is your castle and at least in terms of legal theory, you have the right to expect quiet in that space. How will the kennel add to our quality of life? It will not. It is no problem for you when it's your dog barking. If your dogs are barking, if your dog's barking interferes with your plans, you can bring him in the house or take other steps to quiet him. When it's your neighbor's dog or dogs, it's altogether a different story. It's you and not the dog that must make the accommodation. As odd as it sounds, it's true. While you control your dog's life inside your house, it's your neighbor's dogs that control your life inside your house. Don and I won't be able to do anything in our backyard that is inconsistent with what the kennel dogs are doing outside, even indoors. If the barking is frequent, we won't be able to relax, study, work, concentrate, or have a mellow conversation or a tender moment. The dogs are in charge. They will not vocalize, adjust their vocalization to accommodate us, so we will have to adjust our activities around them. Weather permitting, Don and I want to be able to enjoy our coffee in the morning and not the arrival of daycare boarders. We like to unwind after a long, sometimes stressful day at work by floating in our pool and enjoying dinner outside. We sometimes hear dogs barking constantly now and can't imagine what it would be like with them even closer to our backyard. We are looking forward to the arrival of our first grandchild this June. Our vision of spending catless hours in our backyard, playing in the pool, or watching our grandchild nap under the patio is at risk. This is why we need the supermajority of the council vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Turner?
Councilman, Mr. Mayor, members of the city staff, as you can see, this is a very touchy issue. A pity that you have to sit on these boards sometimes and deal with some of these problems. The issue is, is quite simply, urbanization in my neighborhood has taken place. It's up against the fence of some of our agricultural A1, A2 zoning areas and it's creating a conflict. And when you make your judgments on this, I want you to keep in mind that why is there so much discussion on this particular topic? Is it because it's infringing on everyone in my neighborhood that's associated with this petition that it's going to, the fear that it's going to disrupt our daily lives, and I do mean our daily lives, since it's a twenty-four-seven operation is the idea of this business? And it's a commercial, it is a commercial business. When we talk about A1, A2 zoning, I've had to do a lot of homework on this and I'm still not quite sure what constitutes to allow a commercial business to be in an agricultural area. And when you look at the A1, A2 requirements, what is really A1, A2? Both of them mention that it's primarily dedicated to agricultural purposes and some examples of that are what we would typically, any reasonable person would think. They have cows, they farm, et cetera. And dogs are not as listed in the Oklahoma agricultural bylaws. Dogs are not considered livestock and I don't think anyone here would consider a dog livestock. So I, I'm a little confused about how it falls under this blanket umbrella of being protected as an A1, A2 zoning and that a dog kennel, a commercial dog kennel, is allowed. So that's some of our confusion as neighbors. This is in Ward Two and this is our problem. You've driven down Bryant, you know the proximity of the Lost Creek neighborhood that we're talking about, who the majority of these petitioners here, or are all the people on the petition here. So far, we have about seventy neighbors on the petition. I'll try to give you copies of that petition so you can see that we just want to deal with the facts here. And the facts are, no one in this neighborhood wants this kennel. Most of you realize how difficult it is to organize some neighborhoods and organize some neighbors to stay focused on one agenda which is a nuisance. And this dog kennel has the potential to set us up to be a constant nuisance. So when we talk about catch-twenty-two issues, much like you're talking about tonight, do I let the neighbors talk about this or do we just postpone this till the nineteenth? I appreciate you guys giving us the time to discuss a little bit this week, but we're in a real catch-twenty-two. We want to be good neighbors, but we don't want our neighbors to infringe on our rights to enjoy our neighborhood in a peaceful environment and that's really what it boils down to. Good? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. That's all that's signed up. Did I miss anybody? Would the owner like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you. On advice of my councilmen, we did have that meeting with the neighbors last Thursday and we did discuss many of the items that they have concerns about. We purchased the business in two thousand and ten and it has been in continuous operation since then. To be able to operate and to renovate the current building, it would create the same type of situation that they don't want in the past. To be able to be granted that permissive use for the house, it will solve all of their concerns because this is more of a upscale resort-type facility instead of an indoor-outdoor kennel. And to be able to answer more of their questions and your questions, I do respectfully ask that we table this until I can get those answers for you and respectfully ask that we continue this for two more weeks to the next city council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
What I would like to let you know is, Mayor, what would really help me is if you can get them on your side because that's usually who I listen to. Okay? So I probably don't have any questions for you, but they're the ones you need to work with.
Absolutely.
If you can get them to back you up, I'll back you up too.
And that was the purpose of our meeting, was to try to encourage them to understand that all of their concerns are going to be solved by us working out of, out of the house as opposed to that old, loud kennel. Any other questions? Thank you.
Make a motion to table the item.
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you.
We brought up a couple of times, nervous to the meeting, other minutes of the Planning Commission meeting. Are you sure that those are correct?
There was a other.
Okay. Item, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is tabled to the next meeting. Item number seven is considered rezoning application number RZ-nine-one-two located in the southwest quarter of section fifteen township ten north range three west being north of Southwest Fourth Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue from C3 general commercial district to C3 PU general commercial district with a permissive use and approved ordinance number seven-seven-zero-one-four. Application by Jacob Boyer. Planning Commission recommended approval, seven-zero.
Mayor and council, this is another application for a doggy daycare. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Southwest Fourth Street and South Santa Fe. The property operated as a daycare facility for children until it was cleared for redevelopment in two thousand and thirteen. The applicant owns and operates an existing veterinary clinic and boarding facility in Norman. He wishes to relocate the business to the site, expanding his services to include daycare for, for dogs and boarding services with outdoor runs. Also, an ancillary living unit for emergency personnel will be provided for on the top floor. In review of this application, staff looked at one of the most common concerns when it comes to doggy, anything to do with dogs, is noise. We, we looked at the existing Vera's Doggy Daycare, which is the only one we have in Moore, to kind of get some reference points. And we determined that locating these in a commercialized area is a benefit. You have a lot of ambient noise that seems to drown out some of the, the dog barking. However, this site in particular, it, it abuts the South Gate addition to the north. The proposed outdoor play area is located approximately one hundred feet to the south of the single-family residential lots. The applicant has recognized that this could be a potential for conflict. On page one-twenty-eight, there is a site plan that shows, he is proposing a seven-foot masonry fence to be along the east and the north side of the outdoor run area. This is for noise abatement. Staff does believe that this is an appropriate use in general in a commercial setting, but however, the council must ultimately determine if a setback of one hundred feet from single-family residential homes along with the seven-foot tall masonry fence is adequate for noise mitigation. The council determined or decides to approve this rezoning application tonight, the approval should be contingent upon the seven-foot masonry fence being required around the north and east property lines and that all dogs must be boarded inside for overnight care, which the applicant has already said that, that's his, that's how he operates. So if you have any questions, I'm here, can help answer any questions. The applicant is also available.
Okay, is this an existing house?
No, this is a vacant property. It's on the corner of Fourth and Santa Fe. There used to be a daycare there.
Okay.
And they've torn that building down, so it's now just a big, open piece of property.
Now, warning.
It would be brand-new construction.
Existing house was on the previous one.
Okay. Well, I just saw the drawing here and the other question I have, this guy quoted a while ago, I don't know if this is true, but state law says that it has to be twenty-two-hundred feet from a school. There's a licensed school right there.
I have read that state law. My interpretation of it is that when they say kennel, and I believe the state law actually says this, they mean breeding kennels for, to breed dogs. And that's not what this is about. This is just boarding dogs.
Mr. Brink, have you looked into that at all?
No. I think that might be something we want to look at, I don't know.
Yeah. Look into it, see if I can find it.
What do you think? Yeah, let's table it for a couple of items back if that's okay.
Table it to the end of the meeting?
End of the meeting.
Make a motion to, to move the item or to table it?
Just move it to the end of the meeting.
I make a motion to move this item to the end of this meeting?
Okay, thanks. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, thanks. I just want to make sure we're in compliance with state law because I never heard that a while ago and I don't know if that's true or not, so I don't know. Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. We're moving it to the back of the items. Okay, at this time, got so many notes on here, can't figure where I'm at. Okay. Consider rezoning application number RZ-nine-one-three located in the northeast quarter of section thirty township ten north range two west being south of Southeast Nineteenth Street and west of Sunny Lane Road from A1 rural agricultural district to R1 single-family development and approved ordinance number seven-seven-one.
Mayor and council, items number eight and nine on your agenda are companion items. This property is located south of Southeast Nineteenth Street and west of Sunny Lane. The applicant wishes to develop the property into a single-family residential neighborhood with two hundred and twenty lots, ninety-eight acres, a density of approximately two lots per acre. To accommodate this use, the property must be rezoned to R1 single-family residential and the pulmonary plat as, as is associated with this application. Water and sewer are available and will be extended throughout the site. There is a significant amount of floodplain located on this property. The applicant will be required to complete the appropriate FEMA submittals for development within a floodplain. Detention for the site will be required. The applicant has proposed detention in several different ponds located in several different sections, primarily along the southeast area of the, of the addition. Access is provided from Southwest Nineteenth Street, I'm sorry, that's Southeast Nineteenth Street. That's a rural arterial roadway. This request does comply with the Moore Comprehensive Plan. Because the side of Moore has seen so much recent growth in the past fifteen years and because this application does comply with the Moore Comprehensive Plan, staff recommends approval of the rezoning application and the pulmonary plat for the Edgewater addition. The applicant would have liked to have been here tonight, but he actually had a family event come up that was unscheduled.
Elizabeth, any protest on this one?
No, there was a couple of ladies who came to the Planning Commission to ask some questions, but they got all their questions answered.
Did you say there's two houses per acre? Did you say there's two houses per acre?
Yes, by the time you factor in all of the floodplain, it's...
Okay, so they're pretty upscale houses.
Right.
For what this cost?
Yeah, the developer likened it to Rock Creek or maybe a knocked above.
Okay.
On Scott Drive, there's three or four homes right there. Do you know, are those homes on well water or the city sewer?
Well, they're not on city sewer, I know that. I'm assuming they're on well water, but I...
Would they be able to get those services if we're just running a water main there?
There is a pretty significant drainage way or creek that separates those properties from this site. They would have to do some aerial crossings in order to get services. I don't know. That's usually pretty pricey. I'm not sure.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is Consider the Preliminary Plaid of Edgewater Addition, located in the northeast quarter of Section 30, Township 10 North, Range 2 West, being southeast 19th and west of Sunny Lane Road. Application by R&amp;R Land Development. LLC Rocky Clark Planning Commission recommended approval, 7-0. This is a sister item to the one we just voted on.
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry, all right, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is Consider Moore Vision 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 42, located in the northeast quarter of Section 11, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of northeast 27th and west of Eastern Avenue, from medium commercial low-density residential to medium-density residential for a duplex senior development application by Justin Rhodes.
Mayor and Council, items number 10 and 11 are companion items on your agenda. This property is located south of northeast 27th Street and west of Eastern Avenue. The property was originally plotted in the 1930s as Pioneer Acres. That was a large lot, rural development. Since that time, the property has remained mostly vacant. However, recently, we have had city services extended to, closer to the site, and interest in development has increased. The applicant is proposing a 36-unit senior housing development on approximately five acres. That is about seven dwelling units per acre. To accommodate this site, the property must be rezoned to R3 as a planned unit development, and the comprehensive plan must be amended to medium-density residential. Public water and sewer are available to this property. Access is available from northeast 27th Street. One curb cut is being proposed to 27th. The development will be gated, must comply with the gated communities ordinance, and a secondary access point for emergencies has been included to access from Little Lane. Pursuant to the Moore Vision 2020, the applicant is utilizing a planned unit development, or PUD, to achieve higher densities. By utilizing a PUD, the city may relack certain density requirements in exchange for amenities that would not otherwise be required. This PUD proposal includes a approximately 2,000-square-foot clubhouse and all structured limited to one story, 70% mason requirement, and a one-car attached garage for all of the duplex units, divided median entry street, and a minimum of 33 trees, and a brick entryway fencing along northeast 27th Street. Because this is a growing part of Moore, and the applicant, application meets the PUD regulations, staff recommends approval of both these items. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Little Lane, is that, if I recall, I think it's pretty much a gravel road. Is that...
It is.
Are we going, is it private or is it a city street?
No, that is a city street. That will be for emergency access only, so the only time that will be accessed by this development would be if the fire department needed to get in and the main entry were blocked.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, I think this would be a nice addition up there. Item number 11 is Consider Rezoning Application Number RZ-914, located in the northeast quarter of Section 11, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of northeast 27th Street and west of Eastern Avenue, from A2 Suburban Agricultural District to R3 PUD General Residential District, Planned Unit Development and Approve Ordinance Number 772-14, application by Justin Rhodes. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, 7-0. This is in Ward 2. This is a sister item to the other.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? No, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 12 is Consider Rezoning Application Number RZ-915, located in the southwest quarter of Section 29, Township 10 North, Range 2 West, being north of Southeast 34th and east of Sunny Lane, from A1 Rural Agricultural District to A2 Suburban Agricultural District and Approve Ordinance Number 77314, application by Kent Davidson. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, 7-0. This is in Ward 1.
Mayor and Council, this property is located north of Southwest 34th Street and east of Sunny Lane. The applicant wishes to split the property in the future, but is now requesting for the property to be rezoned to A2 Suburban Agricultural District, which matches his current zoning of his own property that backs up to this property. Being located in a rural area of Moore, there is no access to public water or sewer service. The lots will be served with private well and septic systems. Should be noted that the applicant currently does not have access to Sire Lane, which is shown on your map. This was an item of some discussion at the planning commission. The residents were there who have access and maintain Sire Lane and made a point of saying that currently, the applicant does not have access to Sire Lane. However, with just the rezoning, city staff feels confident that this, the zoning can occur, and at the future time, when any sort of lot splits or development happen on that property, is the time where we would review the access. So that would give the applicant some time to work something out. Staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How big a piece of property is this? I can't tell with a map.
I'm sorry?
How large a property is this?
How large is this? The property is, it's approximately seven acres.
Okay. I couldn't tell if it was 70, or a 7, or 3, or what. Okay, thanks. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
David.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 13 is Consider Approval of Names for a New Park, Recreation Center, and Aquatic Center to be located on South 4th Street and Broadway. Dr. Curtis Berry Central Park, Iron Horse Recreation Center, and Iron Horse Aquatic Center, and what we just called the Moore Park.
Well, it has become known as Central Park, Mayor. That's, one of the things that we wanted to do was, when we were very early on in the master plan process, we used the term Central Park to identify an area and not be too specific about it, and the name sort of stuck. And as we inquired about the property, the majority property owner, Becky Marshall and her family, their dad, Dr. Curtis Berry, owned that land. They were raised there. When we went through the appraisal process, the budget that we had fell well short of the appraisal that we got back. And they agreed to meet the city's budgeted costs that we had. And so it amounted to about a million to a million and a half dollar donation for the park. So in our discussions with them, they recommended that we name the park after them. The Central Park name, it stuck, and it became branded as that. So we combined the name Dr. Curtis Berry Central Park. And there's precedent for that. We do that with Tom Struval Little River Park. So we feel that that fits, and that honors them, and really honors our obligation to them. And then, most cities, the vast majority of cities, the recreation centers and aquatic parks have a name. As we went through the master plan process, again, over 1,000 people participated, and our stakeholders, they all like the railroad theme or railroad history, and this is just another piece to tie that in. The architecture meets that. Much of the features in the aquatic park will have a railroad theme to them. So this is just one more piece in the puzzle. And we think that the name lends itself to great marketing opportunities by Deidre and her staff. And so it just makes sense from our standpoint. So that's our recommendation, those two names. So with that, will we have you take any questions?
I don't have a question, but good job.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
I've been asking the family to help our city out with that. It really was.
If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be where we're at today with that project, so.
I'm not, it's real hot on the iron horse theme, but that may be a personal thing.
You have something against iron horses?
Well, I would, I like, I would just ask, maybe, next time before you put on the agenda, we have an opportunity to look at it, talk about it. Once it's here, it's for us. It's kind of, it doesn't deal. Of course, we have the option to go there if we want, but it's kind of like, the wife does the kids, we're all going to Disney World. Other than that, no, we're not. It's not gonna be a scenario, so.
You know, when I opened, I saw this, and I says, well, who the heck is Dr. Curtis Berry? How does he play it to the community? And of course, then I inquired and found out a little bit, but I'm not sure that we had any notice on this coming to us. And I just, you know, I think we probably have a moral obligation to honor that commitment to that family and so forth. You know, like, you know, if we're making agreements like that, or city staff is making agreements like that, council needs to be informed. I don't like surprises like this. And as far as the iron horse, you know, I guess it's okay, but it doesn't really, as far as I'm concerned.
You want to table?
As far as the recreation center and the aquatic park, I mean, we can...
Maybe kick around some more ideas?
We can kick around some more ideas.
Yeah, I'd like to see some ideas.
Are you in any big-time crunch here for a name?
No, 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 not at all. We just, the naming of the park to get ready for the groundbreaking on Friday, it just made sense to do the two at the same time. Kill two birds with one stone, basically.
We'll get one out of three. So we are good with the Dr. Curtis Berry Central Park?
Mr. Roberts, did you come up with any scandals we need to know about, or?
No, I didn't, didn't write back that. Didn't do any research on that at all, but, and I think everybody, from what I can, a little bit of information I've got, like he was a very reputable doctor in Norman. It's just too bad he wasn't in Moore.
His land was in Moore.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I can make that. I can recognize that part of it.
So are you fine with the Dr. Curtis Berry Central Park? Are you okay with that, Todd?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Can you make?
Just for information, I heard way, way, way back that because of the concession that they made, that there would be a family name involved in that, so. I don't like, I don't...
Didn't we hear that at planning session, one of your last planning? That was a long time ago. That was one of the things we were gonna offer them? It seemed like I remember that, but I remember hearing it a long time ago.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, I don't think we...
That part's not a surprise to me at all. I think it's appropriate.
Mr. Brink, can I make the motion that we do this with just the Dr. Curtis Berry Central Park part of it?
I was looking at that just now, and I think the way this agenda item was written, it's either all or nothing, so the action will be to table the whole item.
Well, this is table the whole thing until the next meeting.
I make a motion to table it out.
Okay. Do we have a motion? You make a motion?
Second.
Thank you, thank you for your work on this.
Robert, will you make a motion?
To table it.
Okay, then I'll say it.
And thank you for your work on this.
Sure.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor, if I could, just real quick, since y'all took the vote, the groundbreaking for the park will be this Friday. Just want to be, serve as a reminder for you, 10:00 AM. I don't probably look for a big white tent, wide groundbreaking, so. Want to invite y'all for that.
10:00 AM when?
This Friday.
Friday, okay.
May 9th.
We'll be there. Sounds good.
The bids are currently out on the street for the project, and will be due back when?
The pre-bid is tomorrow, and then the bids are due May 15th, so wide bid opening then, so.
Expecting quite a bit of interest from general contractors on this project, so.
It is, just, hang on, hang on. I think we've got something on, like, Little River for May 13th?
Yes, yeah. Devon has a special announcement they want to make. They donated a considerable sum of money to go in Little River Park. That will be May 13th at 11:00, and then May 15th, we'll have a ribbon cutting, real simple affair at Parmley Park. Parmley is essentially done, and so we've invited some kids and parents and teachers from Kelly Elementary and staff and Parks Board and council to partake in that event too. So, and I believe that's 11 o'clock as well, on May 15th.
Nothing for veterans?
Nothing for veterans. We don't have a date yet, because we're waiting to get it further along as far as the playground and stuff, so.
All right, thank you.
I'm Jim O'Macallum.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the more public works authority.
There's another item?
15.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Item 14 is Discuss a Possible Ordinance Dealing with Limits on Where Protesters Can Stand Around Public Schools.
I did have a subsequent conversation with the city manager of Norman after this was talked about at the last meeting. They are proceeding with drafting an ordinance along the lines of what we talked about, limiting where these protesters can stand, within, I think, 150 feet of the points of ingress and egress from public schools. So that's what I anticipate they're going to do. He did tell me they didn't think that would be until June, that their council would hear it. Any other thoughts or ideas we're certainly open to?
I want you guys to know, I've spoken with Dr. Romans from the school district, and he's all about it. He doesn't like it when, you know, children are certainly, you know, schools are used for purposes of protest. He would like to see us go for it.
And I did also talk with him as well, and that was his, but he conveyed to me as well.
Mr. Brink, you are comfortable that we would be okay looking at federal...
I agree with the reasoning. Uh, I don't know that, uh, anybody can be really comfortable with it until it was challenged and pronounced which way, made one way or the other. I do agree with the reasoning, uh, behind it. I think it's, uh, wouldn't possibly be upheld, I mean, because of that reasoning.
And right now, they protest this place across the street. You can't be on the school property, the school has.
But they only have to be across the street, they can be on the sidewalk on the, on the school property.
On the city right of way, on either side of the street, uh, they could be there.
So if you were, if you would've gone, if you would've been at the Westboro though, they were smack dab in front of the school, on the sidewalk.
I don't, I don't like what they stand for on the protests, but I don't know. We have some time to think about it, so.
Yeah, and again, the whole, my whole point on it was that it's not an attempt to discourage freedom of speech. It's just to let kids get to and from school in a safe manner without being harassed, and that's all it is. So, cause I mean, and part of, part of what we were looking at, or Norman was talking about, was doing the, you just, uh, you can't protest 30 minutes before, during, or 30 minutes after. If you want to be there 30 minutes, 31 minutes after, knock yourself out. But that'll give the kids the time to leave school, get away from there, you know, cause a lot of kids walk. And that way, kids can leave and, you know, cause I'd hate to imagine if these kids were leaving in the middle of Westboro, was out there stomping on American flag and, and, uh, you know, the other half of the community was there to storm, you know, the Westboro church. You guys have any other thoughts here? Is there any other thoughts on it, or?
I think the courts are very liberal with the term free speech. I don't think you're gonna be able to write an ordinance that will withstand it, frankly.
Well, again, it's, you know, it doesn't affect freedom of speech, and there, there are some court cases that have kind of addressed this, you know, it's.
Well, I, I agree with you. I'm just saying that is, that's gonna be.
Well, even if you look at like, uh, funerals and abortion clinics, federal courts have upheld that you can have, um, an area that people cannot get within certain feet of, you know, and that does address freedom of speech. And they have upheld those decisions.
Anybody else? Okay. At this time, a recessed the city council meeting and convened the more public works authority meeting. Item 15 is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of a regular more public works authority meeting held April 23rd, or excuse me, April 21st, 2014. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013, 2014 in the amount of $347,422.63.
Move to approve, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, a recessed the more public works authority meeting and convened the more risk management meeting. Item 16 is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held April 21st, 2014. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013, 2014 in the amount of $161,591.73.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, a recessed the more risk management meeting and reconvened the city council meeting. Item, which item did we take? Yes, item, item seven?
Yes.
Okay. Item seven is consider rezoning, application number RZ 912, located in the southwest quarter of section 15. Township 10 north, range 3 west, being north of Southwest 4th Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue from C3 General Commercial District to C3 PU General Commercial District with a permissive use and approval order just number 77014, application by Jacob Lawyer, and planning commission recommended approval 7043.
Mayor, council, uh, in looking at the definition or the question that was raised, uh, in Title 11, Section 22, 115, uh, it says, "Upon the effective date of this act, which was 2008, uh, no dog kennel shall be located within 2,500 feet of a public or private school or licensed daycare facility in a municipality having a population of more than 300,000." So there is a 2,500 feet rule, but it only applies in municipalities with populations greater than 300,000.
Okay.
Another few more questions.
That doesn't make sense, right? Cause it can ask, like, what? Right, okay. Now, anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve item 7.
Okay.
Did, did we get any protests at all?
I was gonna say, anybody want to speak on this issue? That's so strange that one has 100 people show up, the other one has none. I don't understand, but.
I live in that area and I don't really want a doggy daycare.
We have one protest.
Did you, um, did you sign up to speak?
Sorry.
Could you sign up to speak?
Yeah.
I'm not supposed to speak, but.
You're allowed, everybody's allowed to speak.
Yes.
Yes, we had tabled it till we got a, oh, I'm sorry. We had tabled it until we got Mr. Brink's opinion that it was legal for us to approve it. We have.
There wasn't any protesters at the planning commission meeting, right?
Yep.
Okay, Carol, you missed it.
And we, we have a veterinary clinic here, right?
No.
Is that right? No.
Yes, this application, his main purpose is a veterinary clinic.
Okay.
But he will be offering the additional services.
Okay.
Boarding and daycare, but not kennels personally, or?
Boarding and daycare.
Same thing.
But not kennels.
Mr. Brink, did you ever come up with the definition of what a kennel was?
All right.
Do you ever figure out what a kennel is?
According to this, uh, statute here, a dog kennel means any place other than a federal, state, or municipal facility. Uh, so it doesn't apply to our animal, uh, control shelter. Uh, veterinary hospital or medical research institute where more than four dogs beyond the age of six months are kept, harbored, boarded, sheltered, or bred. So if you're not a federal, state, or municipal facility, you have more than four dogs, it is a kennel.
So basically, all veterinary offices would be a kennel, right?
And most of them all are some type of boarding service.
Do we have a second?
Um, I don't have one, Mark.
Mr. Mayor, we got.
Someone may have.
Yes, sir. Sure, come on up. I never would've guessed your bets.
Jake, I'm the applicant, um, mayor, councilman. Um, I, I believe the, the way it reads it excuses or accepts, um, dairy hospitals. That's the primary, uh, purpose of our building, um, boarding. I don't even know if we do doggy daycare or not, but we'll be keeping owners' animals during the day if that qualifies. That's ancillary service, so I, I just want to clarify and answer any questions if anybody had any.
So you basically board them if they're sick and you've operated on them?
Yeah, but I mean, if, if owners, you know, our clients that would go out of town, we'd board their animals till they got back.
Okay.
It does, it does say, "For the purposes of this section, the term dog kennel means any place other than a federal, state, or municipal facility, comma, veterinary hospital or medical research institute, comma, where more than four dogs beyond the age are kept, harbored, boarded, sheltered, or bred."
So veterinary offices are not kennels.
How many items?
So there's six in here, so.
We have, uh, we have 29 warnings. Yeah, the building is, um, proposed, building's 7,200 square feet and, um, the space for a kennel is about 750. So it's a small portion of the building, but, and, and we moved the outside areas, pushed them as far to the south, away from residential area.
And Mr. Brink, did we run the risk if we approved this, that if they ever left town, that we might have a dog breeder show up and put 50 dogs out there without more rooms?
I suppose so, then there'd be all the other ordinances and state law that work with, uh, limited breeders.
Okay, so that, that'd have to come back to us, I guess, if that were to happen? Or then we just have to simply just follow those laws without us blessing it?
We have to make sure that they comply with all the laws that were in place if the use change. This, you know, this section here applies to cities with 300,000.
Sure, okay.
Located next to the schools or areas like that. Uh, the definition of kennels can be different when you are less than 300,000.
Now, does that definition dictated by us or the state?
Yeah, we have a definition, I wonder, for what a, what a kennel is for our folks.
Are you comfortable that, do we need to change anything to make a distinction between veterinary hospitals and dog breeding kennels? You think?
Been a long time since I've had to deal with the definition of a kennel, but I don't think so.
Jason, you're, you're the animal guy.
I'm in my own business, I get drug out.
You're not gonna have pig and goats in your.
Yeah, he's goats, we got, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Um, no.
I will second this.
I second it.
Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Good thing you're here, I don't have any votes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item, at, at this time, a recessed the more risk management, oh, okay, we've already got to that. We did the risk management reading, right? Okay, we've gone back and forth, that's crazy, man. Okay, item 17 is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. Uh, there's no one signed up to speak, anyone want to? Okay, any items from the city council or trustees?
I'd just say thank you to Robert Miss Cruz. My street alone has had about seven or 18 different poles this week in the water lines, and they've done a great job.
Good. I would like to say thank you to Apache, uh, Apache Corporation. Uh, they came up and out of the park the other day, uh, they gave us 5,000 more trees to the tree bank and they also gave $500,000 for, uh, storm shelters for more school system. And I do appreciate them so much. Appreciate to all the parks people and what a good job they did. They got the Southmore kids out and planted trees for them on, on that day. Appreciate you, Mark, for showing up, doing the proclamation, appreciate that.
I have a question. Has there been a study done, uh, considering Lost Creek being where it is? Has there been a study done, a, a noise impact study, uh, just from the, the city park itself? Judging by where that's located, that's gotta be pretty loud, there's gotta be a lot of traffic from it. It seems like to me that, uh, they're already dealing with the nuisance. Uh, a lot of kids on the weekend, a lot of yelling, screaming, a lot of ballparks, uh, the music's playing, and a lot of traffic. And I'm having difficulty envisioning how much more impact the dogs are gonna have. So do we know if it, if it's feasible to do such a study?
Do we normally do those or are we part of that?
Well, I don't know how they can do a study on our park and the operations that it has over the years.
Well, there's kennel, the impact that they would not necessarily, but far if you're right on that. But I hear walking, I hear more high school and Southmore's favorite cats and lots of more jackpots on your hair bands. People all season.
Good idea, though.
When you consider this, uh, in two weeks, if you want more information before you make a decision and you want to ask for that, you can do that.
Well, I'm not sure if you're for.
As far as any study of the.
If EPA, state EPA, would, could get involved or something like that?
I, I guess it's possible, I doubt seriously if they would, um, on a local noise issue like that. But, uh, I don't know, I mean, as far as your question, as far as the park, I'm not aware of any study that's ever been done on that. I mean, certainly, it's true what you said, that is, there's a lot of sound and noise that comes in that park virtually every weekend and all summer long.
Okay, anybody else?
Just a couple of quick things. I, I read today that the United States Supreme Court had a ruling that it's legal for municipalities to have a fair notification for council meetings. I only stopped doing that, uh, a while back and I really should apply, and I'm gonna consider bringing that back. And I also, I've been driving by a public safety building and, where's everybody gonna park? There's gonna be plenty of parking for, for, I just, I just, I just got a thought of that.
We've thought about the problem that it's going to be, yes, sir. The, all the employees' vehicles, the police vehicles and all that will obviously be behind the building. Um, and the parking lot there that's on the east end, the new parking lot there, that'll actually be public parking there. It won't be employee parking when it's all finished behind. So there's parking there, all the main street parking will be available, uh, up and down through there. We've already had some preliminary discussions with the bank about the possibility of leasing some space over there. So we, we have given that a lot of thought from day one, actually, because it's, and, and court is gonna be the major issue or major problem, uh, when it begins in terms of parking. You know, there's, there's court during the day, which will be an issue, not so much as, but evening courts, I don't think, but. We're gonna kind of see how it goes to know what to do to deal with it.
I've noticed that there's property for sale, a couple of, uh, storage buildings there off of Broadway on the, um, east side. They're blue, painted blue, across on, uh, Masters, Hoffman's Furniture. I think Hoffman's Furniture has one as a warehouse and the one just out there is for sale.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking to that for commercial parking.
There's actually another piece of property over there that we've been approached about from, by an owner, uh, which would be the lot there next door to the bank's parking lot, where the catering business and that business was for years. They've talked to us preliminary about buying that piece of property, which would be more well-located in terms of parking for the building than, than down there. So we've, we've had some very preliminary discussions with them just about, hey, are you interested? And we said perhaps, nothing, nothing, no discussions yet about any pricing or anything like that, but that, that is an option for us.
Something else on the plans that's been official for the city, about, I think we already have, and that's just Old Town and as some of these old buildings are lost, all remodeled, going down, maybe we'll do something to help the, uh, parents. Uh, what we just, we like Old Town to look like, similar to, you know, the little high school, the public safety center building and, uh, not necessarily what goes in there, but just that we saw it and that it could all kind of match and tie together in the old part of the, of our community development. Looking to that?
We've, we've looked at that several different times over the years.
Yeah.
What it boils down to is the, if the property owner, if we'll pay for it, they probably would do it. If we compel it to happen in terms of ordinance, then everything will stay like it is. And that's the conclusion, basically, that we've come to. There's not really any funds available. We thought maybe that some of these HUD funds might be able to be used for that, but I don't know that that's the case now after we get in, we got into it more.
Well, uh, do you think that with the, you know, development of Central Park and just the growth of that area, that it may be more attractive and people be, businesses would be willing to?
Well, certainly, we hope so, absolutely.
Do some of those?
The Old Town Association has been working towards that and hoping for that for lots of years and has done a great job, you know, trying to get their act together in terms of merchants and the festivals and the activities that they have down there to bring people, so, yeah.
Might just be worth with that in, with all these new things that are happening down there. And even further, you have, you know, Sam's and just a lot of stuff is happening over here on the east side.
Definitely.
It'll continue with that, have some, um, control to, with that beautiful, beautiful part of the city. And that's all I have.
Any items from the city manager?
Uh, we need to have another budget meeting, um, so I'd like to do that next Monday night if we can, um, 6:30 if that's okay with you all.
Okay.
For me, we have to do it.
If there's a thunder game on, will you have a TV on?
They, they're not starting until like 8:30 or 9:30 these days, so I don't know. We won't be that long.
Okay, next item's a. Okay, next item's adjourned.
Second.
All right.
No, no, it starts late 30.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Kavner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.